Good evening, welcome to the April 7th, 2025 Valdez Town Council meeting. If you please stand, we'll open the meeting with the invitation by Reverend Matt Matthews, my dear friend from Presbyterian Church. And once we do the invitation, then we will do the pledge of allegiance. Thank you for being here, sir.
Yes, thank you for having me. Let's pray, everybody. We pray to you, O God, be our helper and protector, save the afflicted, have mercy on the lowly, raise up the fallen, help the needy, humble the proud, return the lost, feed the hungry, release the captive, heal the sick, revive the weak, and comfort those in fear. All this we ask for the sake of the world you love. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Okay, council, under item four, informational items and materials in your packet, hopefully you went through those and found some interesting information regarding our departments and so forth. Next, under open forum and public comment, number five, we will first recognize the Drone High School swim team, and I'll recognize Brett Watson to present this to us, please. Brett?
Okay, thank you, council, for allowing us to come here and for honoring us this evening. I should start off by saying that I'm not the only coach for the Drone High School swim team. Stephanie Moyle is also the coach. We started this season with 29 swimmers, which was actually probably one of the bigger teams that they've had in recent years. This was my first year coaching at the high school. And we had a team that was a good mix of experienced swimmers, some that swim year-round at the Valdez pool. We also had some newcomers come in that had never swam a stroke before in their life, maybe they did the dog paddle, could maybe do sort of a breaststroke. So we really worked very hard to kind of get those swimmers to the level that they needed to be. We had huge success this year in spite of the fact that we did have to go to a pool where we didn't have dive blocks, the pool was about three and a half feet deep, but we persevered. Those guys made the trip, we got up there, and ultimately, we were able to go to the conference championships and bring back a championships for both the men's team and the women's team. In addition to that, we had two of our swimmers, both male and female, that we nominated for athlete of the year, and the other coaches within the conference voted on that, and Sailor Watson and William Abernathy were actually named and voted conference athletes of the year. So that was an exciting thing to see. As we went forward, we had swimmers qualify for the regional event, and I think we had 15 that qualified for that, and then from that regional event, we had 10 swimmers that went to the state championship. Throughout the entire season, we had four high school records that were broken, so we were excited about that because that hadn't been done in a while. And so ultimately, we really had a successful season. It was a great first season for me as a coach, and couldn't have been more proud of each and every one of them. And we're going to lose a few key swimmers next year, but hopefully, we can come back strong. Hopefully, we'll have a pool that we can swim in, and we can continue the success that we've been building on for years and years and years. So we thank you for allowing us to come and appreciate all you do for us.
Thank you, Brett, for being here. Congratulations, buddy. Good job. Okay, council, next item under five, open forum. Mayor Protemo will read the rules for public speaking, and then we'll move to the first speaker that has signed up.
Open forum and public comments. The council shall provide at least one period for public comment per month during a regular meeting unless no regular meeting is held that month. Any individual or group who wishes to address the council shall inform the clerk any time prior to the start of the meeting and provide their name, address, and subject matter about which they wish to speak. Persons must be present if they wish to address council. Comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Open forum is not intended to require council or staff to answer impromptu questions. Speakers will address all comments to the entire council as a whole and not one individual. Discussion between speakers and members of the audience will not be permitted. Speakers will maintain decorum at all times. Speakers are expected to be courteous and respectful at all times regardless of who occupies the council chairs. These guidelines will help to ensure that a safe and productive meeting is held and that all those wishing to address the council will be afforded the opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Our first speaker tonight is Mr. Scott Compton.
Good evening, members of the town council. Scott Compton, 3247 Holly Hill Circle, speaking on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Commission. On behalf of the Valdez Parks and Recreation Commission, we would like to speak to last month's vote on the installation of a bubble to meet the needs of Valdez swimmers year-round. We would like to comment on the process of how the town council came to this decision. We were puzzled by the speed in which this decision occurred, given that we were led to believe that the town council wanted to first hear pricing information on the new police and fire building before making a decision on the pool structure. This was the reason given by the council to wait six months before a decision was made. Councilwoman Lowman paralleled our confusion when she asked what has happened that changed the preferred timeline of six months to gather information. The response from Councilman Harvey at that time was, "We have all the information we need, we need to take a vote tonight." The movement away from a need to wait to a need to hurry seems intellectually dishonest as it undermines the council's original mandate. The facts as presented by Councilman Harvey, along with a newfound sense of urgency from the council, seem to fit Councilman Harvey's personal preference rather than a reliance on community input cited in the Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Plan. If the commission had been consulted, the concerns we had for the bubble design could have been communicated. Over the course of a fixed aluminum structure's lifetime, we felt the operating cost savings would outweigh the upfront cost of the design build. Over the course of time, the commission felt the operating costs for a bubble would exceed those of a fixed aluminum structure. For example, Yaden's annual cost quote of $54,000 for setup and removal of the bubble seems excessive. With recognition of that cost, we estimate that over the course of 25 years, the plan to disassemble and reassemble the bubble annually could add up to $1.35 million to the project. That is, of course, if the bubble structure lasts as long as the Yaden estimate Councilman Harvey cited on the March 3 presentation. In addition, to setup and teardown cost is the high operating cost needed to inflate the bubble with continuous airflow. The Parks and Recreation Department estimates the energy usage, that energy usage increases 38% during months when the bubble is installed. While the warranty of 25 years for the bubble's exterior membrane might meet the length of time our community desires, the two-year warranty for the mechanical parts that make up the continuous airflow system is a cause for concern. These future costs, both potential and real, lead us to believe that the comparison cost analysis could have been performed by the commission should the request have been made. All of this information was readily available but not requested during the March 3 presentation. In addition to the commission's concern regarding the long-term cost of the bubble, the process in which the town council decided to move forward is concerning. The March agenda stated discussion of design build. Instead, the time allotted proved to be an opportunity for Councilman Harvey to initiate a presentation and call for a vote. When Councilwoman Lowman requested, and Councilwoman Zimmerman repeated, for a delay of one month to get the Recreation Commission's opinion on the matter, Councilman Harvey rebuffed the idea, stating, quote, "I don't think any of them were pool construction experts, but they have the town's best interest in heart." Yes, indeed, this statement is true. However, the sentiment seems to be a vast departure from Councilman Harvey's original desire to involve the commission in the decision-making process even though no commission member possessed construction or pool installation expertise at that time either. As a reminder, the town council has asked for our due diligence. The board seems inconsistent in that they requested community involvement, yet seized the opportunity to make a decision without the community's input. The commission had an opportunity to be a resource in the decision-making process, but this resource was overlooked. This lack of communication seems unhealthy and does not invoke confidence from the commission. Initially, the commission recognized the increased expense the town had to incur with the approval of a fixed aluminum pool structure. As commission members and as engaged citizens, we felt the responsibility to initiate and participate in a $300,000 capital fund campaign in an effort to offset some of the costs. Given the change in circumstances and the lack of desire indicated by the town council to work alongside of and in partnership with the volunteer members of the Parks and Recreation Commission, we no longer wish to recommend the initiation of a capital fund campaign. The commission will continue to support the recreation facilities in the town of Valdez. However, we wish to express our discontent with the process in which the town council arrived at their decision. Thank you, members.
Thank you, sir. Joe Williams.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, first off, my name's Joey Lindsey, 819 Fontaine, 815 Fontaine, and 818 Bimino. First off, I want to welcome y'all here. First invite to Fun Fish, May 10th. Some of you were here last year. Out of the five, I'd love to see all of you there. We have 175 kids that fish yearly, just about total 600, counting the parents, grandparents, who all come, so it would be appreciative if each and every one of y'all could be there. It's a good stonking ground for y'all to come see your citizens. And it's not just citizens from Valdez, it's citizens from Drexel, Burke County, Caldwell County, anybody, we open it up for all. Second thing I want to talk about, just happened about 30 minutes ago, and I'm in the mayor's ward with your ward, that was the color of the water coming out of the mayor's fire hydrant. If you've seen, I just put a brand-new watering system in, and that's what we take a bath in. That's been going on since 1972. All right, that's a brand-new water line, put in 10 years ago. Supposed to got a brand-new road on it. Never got the road. That's what our water looks like. That's the filter. That's what Ken's into my house, coming out of the town side, and that's what it's supposed to look like when it's brand-new. So, a lot of work going on down on that street, and I just had to put in a brand-new sewer line because it's broke for a certain reason that I won't comment here tonight because I've not done my investigation on it, but I'm pretty sure it's caused a dig. But, that's another matter, but I've had to do that, and it's costing me that, the water line, which I'll be the first one on Fontaine outside of the houses built. 2000 and on, we'll get the first galvanized water line out of our house. So, it'll all be pecks from y'all's meter to my house, throughout the whole house, plus a brand-new sewer line. But just take a look at what I just showed you, that was 40 minutes ago, well, 6 o'clock now, it was 4:35 when I took that. And it was just as red at my fire hydrant before coming in to my house, and I'm across the street. So, just look at what I showed you, see what you can do with the contractors that do our water lines and see what we can do. I know they flush them all the time, guys, don't flush them because they do.
They were at the flush hydrants today.
Yeah, they flush, and they flush them once a month, but that's ever, I change every four weeks, but once a month, I change a filter, and that's what I'm getting. Brand-new, what do you call them, porcelain tubs, is about as brown as that desk that y'all sit behind because it just eats after so many years, so we're remodeling the whole house. But thank you for your time, thank you for what y'all do. Just remember, May 10th, Fun Fish, love to see every one of you there, 9 o'clock in the morning, 9 to 1. Charlie, he's always been there in the last couple of years, love to see the rest of you. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. It's cold, man. I'm glad you could make it tonight.
Jean Marie Cole, I live at 705 Bertha Street in Valdez. My comments tonight, I'm going to try to make very brief because I know you've got a long agenda, but it's something I would like the council members to consider. Last month, you decided it could be better to save money and to purchase a bubble for the pool instead of a permanent structure. That survey indicated constituents preferred. Public safety structures are the upcoming major projects. Studies previously indicated that the Massell Avenue property was best suited for solely a fire station in the interest of having the best evacuation for our fire department to get their trucks in and out into the fires as they needed to in a timely manner. The town had already purchased a building on Main Street and began to look at the renovations for that as a police station. Work was started in that, Police Chief Sharp went through the building, and he looked at the properties and figured out what we could save money on by keeping and what we might be able to sell, and he had it worked out that that building would work for him. It was also on a Main Street in town, right down where police visibility is a good thing. Then, we put a stop on that a hole, and renovating this building is far less costly than building a new building. Chief Sharp developed a plan that it could be used by, and he felt he could make that work, and I appreciate all the effort that he and his men put into doing that. The building for the police station is right on the Main Street, and that's a very good location for it, gives it lots of opportunity for them to be very visible. To look at this option as a great solution, I think that that's what I'm saying, I think we should take another look at that as being a great solution. It would save money just maybe lowering the tax rate or holding the tax rate, or some of the money that we could save could be used for additional equipment that the police department needed, or some of it could be used to give an increase in salary to our police officers, which is another need that we have expressed. So, I just say, think about it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Always a pleasure. Okay, council, item six, consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that council wishes to have removed? If not, I'll entertain a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Those in favor signify by saying yes and raising your right hand.
Yes.
No opposed. Motion carries, thank you. Item seven, new business. Prior to getting to item A, I need a motion from council to go into a closed session after this meeting, which will be to discuss attorney-client privileges and the qualifications and competence of an individual or officer.
Make a motion to go into closed session afterwards?
Second.
Thank you. Any further? Those in favor signify by saying yes and raising your right hand.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you, council. Okay, item A, public hearing. Ashley Young. Do you want to speak prior to going into the public hearing?
Yeah, I can go ahead and give my presentation and then open up into the public hearing.
Okay. I tell you what, let me go ahead and open the public hearing first, I would prefer to do that.
Okay, that'll be fun.
Counsel, the first item under new business is a public hearing for the rezoning on Dixie Avenue Northwest, and I will entertain a motion that since this public hearing is ready to open, and is now open, and you may proceed. And that was probably very confusing. It was for me.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, do you need a motion, is that what you said?
You don't need a motion.
All right, so you all should have received a packet that looks like this for the staff report of the rezoning. There is one attachment that I would like to add to it that I just received a few minutes ago before the meeting started. It is a petition from property owners surrounding the Zero Griffin Avenue address, and Mr. Mayor, if you'll mind helping give this to you.
I think we should go and copy that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for the staff. Our packet did not include minutes of the meeting at which the planning board considered this application. Does the planning board do minutes?
We do, the minutes haven't been approved by the planning board yet, that typically follows the month after.
How do we, there's a little bit of confusion with the council. We have, we received an audio recording of the meeting, but we had trouble, I had trouble, but it wasn't a hearing problem, I listened to it twice, hearing who was chairing, so could you fill us in? Who chaired the meeting? Who made the motion to accept this application? Who seconded it? And who voted in favor of it? Could you give us those, that information, please?
All right, so, so as far as the motion to make it was the vice chair, and then...
So the vice chair chaired the meeting?
No, the chairman chaired the meeting.
Okay, and the chairman is?
Mr. Carlton.
Okay.
And I apologize, without the list, the names in front of me, I'm still getting to remember the names.
Were you drafted the minutes, though?
The minutes are being drafted, they are approved at the next planning board meeting.
They haven't been drafted yet?
Working on them, yes, but that's because they're normally presented at the next planning board meeting.
Could we have the chairman explain to us how this unfolded? Would that be appropriate, Mr. Mayor? The chairman of the planning board, I think he's here...
I can provide the information, same, the packet that you have in front of them is the same presentation that's given to them.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, could we have the chairman of the planning board explain to us how the meeting was conducted and what the, how the planning board arrived at this unanimous conclusion? I think we need to hear from, directly from the planning board on this.
So, Councilman Harvey, I think the first step would be to let staff, give the staff report, and then if you want to hear from the planning board, then at that point, we could bring them up and they could answer any questions.
All right, I didn't know the staff had more to report.
No, she's got a report she's going to give to council right now on the rezoning petition to just explain the background for you, and then you can bring the planning board member up at that point if you have questions.
Thank you.
And the staff report is also the same report that was given to the planning board, and in that report has the planning board recommendation and the reasons they came to what they did, so it probably answers your question. All right, so this is rezoning application 01-2025 for Zero Griffin Avenue Northwest. So just to be clear with council, the differences here and what else going on, so this is a rezoning hearing, this is for changing the district, which is currently a, or changing the property, which is currently a combination of districts, that's primarily M1 manufacturing, R8 residential, and R12 residential, to be entirely R8 residential. This is a consideration for the types of uses allowed in the district, not just the proposed use. So, what we're determining here tonight is if the uses permitted entirely, all the uses in our zoning district are consistent and reasonable for the property, not necessarily just the proposed use. The proposed use of the multifamily apartments will require a separate special use permit application, which will be the decision of the Board of Adjustment, and it will have its own separate public hearing, everything separately with that in terms of the site design and requirements, ingress egress, water sewer, all that is more so associated with the special use permit, not the rezoning. So rezoning is just going from this classification of uses to this other classification of uses. That's the decision we're primarily looking at tonight. Of course, we do know the proposed use, so it's why we're wanting to rezon. So dive into it a little bit more detail here. The acreage for this parcel is 15.82 acres. The requested action, as I said previously, was to rezon from the multiple jurisdictions, manufacturing, and two different levels of residential to the R8 district. The existing use is currently vacant. The property owner is Hainhens Farm Incorporated. The applicant is MC Morgan and Associates Incorporated. The proposed use to go along with the R8 zoning district is for multifamily apartments, which as I mentioned, will be a special use permit should the rezoning go through. And that special use permit is something issued by the Board of Adjustment and ends with their decision since the revision of the UDO. The proposed is a 48-unit complex between two, three-story buildings consisting of a one, two, and three-bedroom unit. It'll have things like sidewalks, clubhouse, playground, picnic area, outdoor seating areas, onsite dumpster recycling, et cetera. So review criteria for the rezoning. To the north, we have properties that are zoned R12 residential, and they currently contain single-family homes. To the south, the properties are zoned manufacturing and contain commercial and warehousing uses. Properties to the east are zoned R8 and contain single-family homes, and to the west, properties are zoned M1 and contain manufacturing and warehousing uses. So in that map to the side, you could see our subject property here highlighted in yellow, and you can see the blue area is the majority of that parcel, which is your M1 district. To the north, there's a little kind of stubout that goes off to Bass Street, which is zoned R12, and then down to the south, that other stub off of Bass is zoned R8. So the request is to change it all to R8. So zoning criteria for the proposed district, this is the description from the UDO on what the intent of the R8 district is, which is to provide for small town... on what the intent of the R8 district is, which is to provide for small, shall provide for small-scaled residential development within walking areas, generally a quarter of a mile of services. Streets shall be interconnected, and a range of lot sizes is encouraged. The neighborhood residential district is to permit the completion and conformity of residential subdivisions. So the zoning of the adjacent neighborhood to the property is currently zoned R8. And therefore, the proposed rezoning to R8 would be consistent with the surrounding districts. So this wouldn't be considered a spot rezoning. It would be considered, as far as jurisdiction or districts go, consistent with what's around that area. To further continue with the proposed, you would have to, within the R8 district, I know this table is a little bit small for you to see, but this is the list of permitted uses from the UDO. Highlighted at the bottom here is multifamily housing. And you could see in all districts, no matter where it would be, is a special use permit application. With the exception of the R12 district and the M1 district, which is why we're looking at the rezoning. As far as traffic goes, the property has access on both Dixie Avenue Northwest, Griffin Avenue Northwest, and Bass Street Northwest. That being said, the proposed use at this time currently only has one proposed entrance using Dixie Avenue Northwest. This has not gone through TRC approval yet, so additional entrances could be required by fire and safety, but that is yet to be determined. The street network in this area is gridded, making for multiple options for ingress and egress along Dixie Avenue Northwest to the west. Northwest due west end street, southwest Bass Street, northwest, or Morganton Street Northwest. To all get to the main thoroughfare of Highway seventy or the second, very thoroughfare of Church Street Northwest. The NC DOT twenty twenty-three average daily traffic count along Main Street was recorded at eighty-two hundred square, or eighty-two hundred trips per day. The average traffic count along Church Street was at twenty-four hundred trips per day. The neighborhood streets are not NC DOT maintained, so they do not have those counts on them. And as such, do not have the associated counts. And as far as funding improvements from DOT, Main Street and Church Street are not currently in the twenty twenty-four, twenty thirty-three STIP, which is the State Transportation Improvement Plan. So there's not currently any funding projects for those. For public services, this would include things such as water sewer, police, and fire. The proposed use would require water and sewer taps on-site. There is currently water and sewer traveling through the area. And since the property is presently vacant, it would, obviously, no matter what would go in there, would require additional police and fire protection. So the area is also within the watershed for protected area, which limits the allowable built-upon area. For protected area, that would put it at twenty-four percent built-upon, or thirty-six built-upon with curb and gutter in the street system for a low-density permit, or twenty-four to seventy percent built-upon area for high-density development. That would go for either a multifamily complex or an industrial use as well. One other thing to keep in mind with this property is that it does consist of a large flood hazard zone that runs through the middle of this, along Die Branch. And as far as proposed use goes, the proposed use would not be building in that floodplain. So just to give you all an idea, again, the property is highlighted in yellow. And essentially, everything in blue or striped or yellow going through there is your floodplain areas. So that is a fairly large limiting factor on this property. So consistency with the proposed zoning and Valdez Vision Land Use Action Plan. The Valdez Vision Action Plan has a future land use map within it, which is used as a guiding document for rezoning cases. While it's not necessarily a concrete, this is where the line goes, this is what makes my decision, it is just a guiding document, so you can make decisions based on what the rest of the plan says, on if you think it should be allowed to go there. If you go from a hard look at the map, as many, the property is in the future land use destination reserved for manufacturing. And that was a plan from twenty twenty-four, or twenty fourteen, that was adopted by town council. So here we can see that future land use map, the broader spectrum of the entire town, and I have a red arrow pointing to where we're looking at. And then in a zoomed-in area outlined in black there is the property that we're interested in. And it is being shown on the future land use map as manufacturing. And as I said, it's a guiding document, so when you look further at the other priorities, recommendations made by it for industrial development, it does state that it would continue to provide developers with incentives for adaptive reuse of vacant industrial sites. This would be one of the vacant sites that would fall under that. And also to keep an up-to-date inventory of industrial sites in and around Valdez that are available for development or redevelopment. So again, that would be one of those sites that would be on the list still. On the other side of that, since it is a proposed residential development that would go in there, there is a priority number four from the plan. Also states to evaluate the town's development ordinances for areas that would help promote a diversity of housing choices. And then also encouraging the development of mixed-use and multifamily housing in appropriate zoning districts. So there's a little bit of flexibility from that land use plan showing for manufacturing or for residential, primarily in a diverse housing choice. So these are some materials that were provided from the applicant. This is, I will note, is preliminary, has not been through technical review. So this is very much a concept plan at this point in time for the rezoning itself. So this is a schematic of what the proposed elevations would be of the apartment complex. This would be obviously one of the two buildings. And then again, preliminary concept, what the site would look like. I can't show a pointer on here, I don't think. So you can see where the entrance would be right off of Dixie right now, and that dark green area is the floodplain area, so it would not be impacting that. And then where the two buildings would be located on deeper into the site. So as far as the planning board recommendation went, the planning board reviewed the application, same as what was provided to you all just a moment ago. During their March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five meeting, the planning board recommended approval of the rezoning by town council as inconsistent with the future land use map, but consistent with the residential development priority recommendations made by the vision plan, based on the need for housing diversification. The planning board recommended to approve the rezoning request of Zero Griffin Avenue from M1 manufacturing to completely R8 residential, as consistent with the surrounding zoning district, and to provide diversification of housing. This vote passed five to zero. So as far as staff finding goes, the rezoning petition oh one twenty twenty-five Dix, or Dixie Avenue Northwest, also Zero Griffin Avenue, to be considered, again, inconsistent with the future land use map, and that the request for residential from it being designated as an industrial use. However, staff does consider the proposal for diversification in housing to be consistent with the priority recommendations made by the residential section of the plan. That's where it kind of comes to a little bit of gray area, but a decision by council, which way you would like to go with it, if you would like it to stay industrial, or if you would like to move it to become a kind of transitional residential type of use between those manufacturing areas and the current residential area. And again, reminder that the future land use map is a guidance document, along with the rest of the plan, for town officials to use in rezoning decisions. Officials may decide to modify the map when there is a rezoning request that they find consistent with the surrounding area and supports other areas of the plan, recommendations in association with the future land use map. Alright, and would council have any other questions for me?
Counsel?
Could we now hear from the planning board? If the chairman is present, I thought I saw him come here.
Hello, my name's Carlton Caruso, eight zero five Michael Avenue.
Thank you. Two or three questions for you, please, Mr. Chairman. Do you verify that what was presented was correct, that the planning board did unanimously recommend this rezoning?
We did.
Okay. Now, it was, the rezoning was, what you looked at and what was presented was really two things. One was, two-step process. One was rezoning, and that's what we're hearing is about, I think. And then the second, and the here, the rezoning, the final word on the rezoning is the council, is that correct? This is from the Unified Development Ordinance, I think.
Councilman Harvey, I think I can answer that. That is correct, yes.
Thank you. And secondly, then, if the rezoning is approved, then the Board of Adjustments will consider a special use permit to allow this low-income housing to take place. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Does that require council approval, or is the final word on that the Board of Adjustments?
Board of Adjustment.
Board of Adjustments. So the council has no say in this, except tonight regarding rezoning.
Tonight.
Alright. And then, one other point I picked up in the, in the ordinance that I would hopefully, planning board members would be as familiar with as me, but what I picked up was that an application for rezoning must come from the property owner. Now, everything we've heard comes from a developer who is not the property owner. Did the planning board verify in any way that the person who made this presentation was acting on behalf of the property owner?
We were not presented any information.
Pardon me?
Just what we were presented was the only information that we could receive.
You have no information from the property owner?
I can answer further.
I'm sorry?
Alright, so how that works is it can be an application from the property owner, or that someone who has interest in purchasing the property itself. It would be the same as for the upcoming rezoning that we would have seeing for the town property, where the town's the owner, but there's someone who has a potential to buy the property for a specific use. Same kind of situation here. It is currently owned by, what, Hen something? But the applicant does have an option to purchase the property, so therefore, they could be an applicant for the rezoning.
Yeah, I'm, I have to apologize. I didn't hear all that, but the way I read the ordinance is that the application must be from the property owner. My question is, do you have any documentation from the property owner that wants this property rezoned?
The application is...
Is that a yes or no? I'm sorry.
The application is by the developer who has a position to...
The application does not have the property owner's name, signature on it, does not. The application is signed by a real estate developer.
Who has an interest in purchasing the property.
You have some verification of that. That's what I'm asking for.
Yes.
You have written verification from the property owner?
Not from the property owner themselves.
You don't have from the property owner. I'm sorry, I'm trying to get this yes or no question answered. Do you have written verification from the property owner that...
No, sir.
Pardon?
No, sir.
No, sir, okay, alright. So I guess that would take me back to then, why was it even considered by the planning board? But here we are, I suggest that we go ahead with, with a hearing, since we know where it stands. And let me just repeat. The council has, the only voice the council has in this is tonight, to deal with rezoning. It's clear where the planning board stands, and the planning board is the Board of Adjustments. So if we accept this recommendation, then this will become forty-eight units of low-income housing. So, so that's my point, I made my point, so I'd like to hear from other council members and from citizens, all.
Can I ask our attorney? How is the property supposed to be presented to the planning board? And without the signature and so on, how is that usually done?
I think the, I think what's trying to be conveyed here is who has standing to file the petition for rezoning. And it can be either a property owner or someone who has a contract right to acquire the property. And it's my understanding that here, someone holds a contract right to acquire the property, and that is the person or entity that's filed the petition.
Yes.
Okay.
So the planning board had all the papers.
So we did have that contract, is that what you're saying? We do have that contract?
We do, we do have the application for the rezoning, yes, from the developer who has a interest in purchasing the property from the property owner.
Okay.
I'm hearing two answers here, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Do you have a copy of the contract between the developer and the property owner?
That particular contract, no.
No, so the answer is no. Right? So I keep, I keep hearing no, okay.
Do you, I guess the question is, do you have a copy of the contract that gives the petitioner the right to purchase the property?
So from, okay, no, then.
So, so the petitioner hasn't shown they have essentially standing to file a petition?
I do not have that on hand, no.
Okay.
You see, and my concern with this, just, not to be a pain about it, but we could have any real estate speculator come in to the planning board, waste the planning board's time, waste the council's time, asking to rezone some property because they want to invest in it. And they don't want to make an offer or purchase the property, but they want to take everybody through all these hoops before they before they own the property. And I think that's why the wording is the way it is. I mean, if a rezoning petition doesn't come from the property owner, why, why are we taking it? So that's it. But, you know, again, I think it's time to move on from here. Let's, let's hear about...
Can I ask our attorney, can we move forward without this document?
Well, I guess, so this is a legislative hearing. I mean, he's gonna have, whoever this petitioner is would have to have standing. I don't know if the petitioner's here tonight and can attest to the fact that they have standing to file the petition or not. If that were the case, then you could move forward, but I think it's going to be hard for you to find that you have a valid petition if you don't have a valid petitioner. Yeah, so I think your options are to continue with a hearing, realizing that you've got that impediment, or you could make a motion to table this matter to a later time, which would give you time to reconsider it.
I think personally, we should go ahead. We have a lot of citizens who took time out to come out tonight to speak, so we do need to hear from them. And my only question in everything, did the planning board have a chance to actually go out to that property and look at the road that that would be located on? See, that's, that's my concern. That isn't a very dangerous, that road is called the dip for a reason. People fly down that road. People fly down that road. The bridge that is at the bottom of Dixie in the dip, it can only hold one car at a time. I've almost ran off that bridge a few times, the bridge has no guardrail on it. It is, it's just not a safe area, in my opinion, to add 48 more units. That has been something, and you'll hear more of that, I'm sure, this evening, but it's, and from what I understand, Dixie is not in line to be repaved, it's basically held together by rubber tar or something right now. It looks like, I have pictures that I could have brought tonight to show you. It's not, it's not in good shape, so if it's, that's another issue that I'm having. And I, I guess I was just curious if anybody had actually gone out and looked at the road where this is being proposed for.
Anyone else on council have questions?
I agree that we should listen, because we do have a lot of people here tonight. I'm just saying, we're missing a key piece, and we need to keep that, we need to remember that as we think about this whole thing.
Anyone else? Okay, are there any members of the public who would like to speak for or against this project? When you come up to speak, you'll need to give us your name and your address, and your time limit will be five minutes. Can we start the timer, please, ma'am? Give us just a minute, ma'am.
Good evening, council, my name's Tracy Wakefield, I reside at 721 Tron Avenue Northwest. I appreciate the council's diligence to want to make sure that everything is in line without rushing to a decision. I spent the last year and a half living on Tron, finally having a major foot traffic problem corrected, and it's, it's just been amazing since it has been corrected. Since I reside on Tron, we, we do not need the extra foot traffic, and the councilwoman is correct, Dixie is not, Dixie is not set up for that extra traffic, but if you also look at Bass and the other connecting streets, it would be a complete nightmare to have all of the traffic going through, not to mention those of us that reside and the neighborhood children, having that many cars going back and forth and back and forth. These roads do not have lines going down the center of them, it, it just makes for a dangerous situation. And I, I live alone, and from a safety standpoint, I'm, I'm concerned. And, you know, without having additional police presence, and, you know, I, I really just appreciate your due diligence and ask that you please consider, please consider all the options that are available, and please take what we have to say to heart. And I just want to tell you, I really appreciate what you do, and I appreciate you taking time to make sure everything's in order. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Gina Walker, 213 Columbo Street Northwest, right behind Bargain House next to Old Rock School. Something she just touched on was foot traffic. I have, I can probably say the most out of this town, being where I'm at. I watched as the city provided free internet, and right in front of my house became a hub for people to shoot up. It became a hub for people to connect to free wifi, for the culvert ditch around the Old Rock School to turn tricks and have people shoot up. I've seen the Old Rock School, or sorry, the bathrooms behind on the football field have to be locked because of drug use in them. I can just keep going on and on and on, I've seen gas siphoned outside of my house, I'm surrounded by three sides of city property, and a cut-through that comes from that side of town to the main area. I've had stuff stolen out of my yard three times, I've had my son's truck broken into once. It is constant, the foot traffic. There is a plethora of studies that will show that low-income housing brings crime. Now, they can't say that it's necessarily just those people, or that it's an increased police presence, and that they're more active, so they're doing more arrests, whichever it is, that number still goes up. It also shows that property values decrease. You want to bring in family housing, diverse family housing, bring in houses that are $180,000, $175,000. Put 10 homes on that property, but low-income housing is not the way. We've seen the low-income housing down at the end of Church Street, if you can tell me 10 things good that have came out of that, if you can tell me that there has not been drug overdoses, increased traffic, and everything else over at the new ones off of Pine Ber, if you can say that there is something that has brought value besides just apartments, then please do. But otherwise, low income coming to Valdez does nothing to boost properties, it does nothing to bring higher-end manufacturing, higher-end businesses, because those people can't afford to shop at these things. We have a town full of thrift stores, and the, the area that we have for manufacturing, we're, we're gonna take up with apartments. Like, bring diversity in our businesses and in manufacturing, and have people that are gonna be able to work at these manufacturing that can afford the diverse housing of $175,000, that would be great. Contact D.R. Horton, contact Meridian Homes, any of these, but keep low-income housing, even the one on the corner across from BP. No bonds need to be passed for that, it does not need to happen. I don't want to see more crime outside of my window and be scared to leave my children at home. I don't want to be scared walking from my driveway as there are homeless people hanging out at the Old Rock School right outside my front door. Unless you have a budget to pay for increased policing, keep it the heck out of here, and keep our streets safe. You can't even keep the water clean, for God's sake, how are you gonna handle supplying it to another development? Just like, none of it makes sense. And just on a side note, if we're gonna have permanent structures parked and wrecked, I'd like a, an enclosed tennis court to use year-round also. So, please don't play favorites on that, okay? So, that's all. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council. My name is Belinda Higrid, 409 Palmborough Avenue Southwest.
I'm sorry, ma'am, could you repeat your address?
409 Palmborough Avenue.
Thank you.
I can speak from experience of low-income housing. The Pine Crosses is in my backyard. Please drive over there and look at all the neighbors who have had to put up privacy fencing to try to keep people off of their property. I was at my house last Friday, because I cannot live there right now, because my house is destroyed, and there were people in my yard stealing stuff out of my yard. I had to call the police. They were in my garage, I couldn't close the door, taking stuff out of my garage, and the police came, and they fixed my garage door so that it would stay down, so they would quit stealing stuff out of my house, in my garage. Low-income housing is not the answer. When I was still in my house, there was be people all hours of day and night, walking up and down the road, screaming and hollering and carrying on, you can't call the police for every minute for that. Why subject Ward 5 to what Ward 4 has had to endure since they opened those apartments? If you don't live in it and been around it, you will never understand it. It is horrible to even to think that this town has come to that. Why are the taxpayers burdened with pay for all these services? They get to come here and live free. You're gonna tax the taxpayers to keep paying for these roads? I looked at the road over there near Heather, it looks like someone has went over and spread glue or something on the road, and it's just, don't even have any edges to it. It's pitiful. The streets on Palmber are pitiful. And talk about traffic of cars, it got to where it was almost impossible to get out of my driveway. They speed up and down through there like it's Interstate 40, even with the speed bump, it never stops. Please do not subject Ward 5 to another disaster, they do not deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I live in 815 Tron Avenue. The property abuts right to my property.
I need your name, sir.
I'm sorry. Mark Smith, back here. I've never done this, so...
Where do you live, Mark, again?
815 Tron Avenue Northwest. It's nice to look out my window in the morning and see deer walking around, the birds are phenomenal, fox, and I like seeing the trees. And what's gonna happen to those trees is they're gonna disappear right to the bottom of my property, and I'll be seeing not trees, but a three-story building, also with low-income housing. On that road right now, we don't have too much crime up there. There's two cops that live there, which is a help, but they don't come wandering up that way. I'm afraid that if low income comes in on the bottom end, that we're gonna start having problems. And as far as the property value, I got hit real hard with taxes this year and insurance. I may not be able to make it as it is, but the property value goes down, I'll be one of those homeless people living under a bridge. And I would really like to see that pristine area that we live in off of Tron Avenue at least remain somewhat pristine. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, council, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Jennifer Hudson, I live at 412 Fayette Street, I'm in Ward 5. So, today I'm coming to you to speak against changing this zoning, whether this is the time we do it tonight or not. I am a real estate broker, I am a Realtor, I am a, the chief relationship officer for one of the largest property management companies in Burke County. So, I understand the value of housing and the need for housing in our county and in our town. So, you know, I think that, when you think about that, you, you have to be strategic about what kind of housing that is. We are headed into some really scary territory here, and I understand when you see the beautiful buildings and the modern looks, that you can get very starry-eyed by that, and it looks great and it sounds awesome, but we have a serious imbalance that will take place if we continue to allow this lower or income-based housing, I think this is an income-based, not low-income. We have a serious imbalance, and in a concentrated area on top of that, Ward 5. So, you know, I just want to remind you, as you are thinking about this, that the decisions that you make on this, and I know this is just the rezoning of the property, and it's not the, whether this is gonna go or not, but the decisions that you make on this literally lay the groundwork and map out what our town is gonna look like in the future. And so, we're gonna end up with a large concentration of this lower-income housing. So, I want you to brainstorm, to think about ways that you can incentivize local investors. We have local investors that are willing to invest in our community, not large corporations that have zero investment in our town, that want to come in, seize our property, seize the opportunity in the lands just to make a dime. Look for local investors, they are there. If you are not aware of them, I will be happy to connect you with a few, that want to invest in our town, but every time they come to the town, they're like, well, they don't want to pay for water taps, or they don't want to do this, or they don't want to do that. Offer them something, something that will bring market rate rents to our town, because that's really what we need. I think we have a great balance right now, as it is, on this income-based housing, we don't need any additional income-based housing. The other thing that I would say is, while my experience and my career, you know, lends some value, I believe, to this situation, I think the biggest piece of value that I can bring to you tonight is my residency as a Valdez citizen and where I live. I live at 412 Fayette Street, right across the street from that big, ugly piece of flat land right now. It's heartbreaking, it is absolutely heartbreaking. If you town citizens that live close to this area want to see what it feels like to drive down your street and see it just be dismantled and ripped apart, come drive down mine, 'cause it's horrible. Anyway, drive down our street, up Praley, two neighborhoods completely destroyed, things that I didn't even kind of have on my radar, like my power bill going up, because the forest is gone, and now the sun is beaming into my front room, my living room, where it's extremely hot now. So, small things like that, that you don't really think about, the increased traffic, which right now is probably just more gawkers than anything else, but the devastation, and it is, I'm gonna use that dramatic word of devastation, because it, it really is devastation in my eyes. It's quite disheartening. And so, the, the people that are doing this particular project, the 48-unit project, it's the same people that did the one across from my street, they're not invested in our town, they don't care about us, they want to make a buck. They're not caring about what the future of our town looks like, they just want to put up a building and move on with their life and go to the next town, and we seem to be pretty gullible in allowing them to do that. So, whether this passes tonight or not, please think about the future of what our town is going to look like, and what our true housing needs are. And I just really wish that I had spoken up more loudly and somebody had voiced an opinion besides myself at the time that our project was taking place, because I don't think that we really realized what that was gonna look like. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council.
A little bit different tack here for a minute. I've got a 35-foot tape measure.
Name, your name and address, please.
Oh, excuse me, Will Muller, 610 Dixie Avenue Northwest.
Thank you.
I took my 35-foot tape out on Dixie Avenue and did some measurements today, and I started up at Morganton, or excuse me, not Morganton, at Church Street, at the intersection of Dixie, and Dixie at that point is 28 feet wide curb-to-curb, and up there, because of the abbey that has so many residents there now, a lot of those people park their cars on both sides of Dixie, up close to that intersection. So, with cars on both sides, there is approximately 14 feet of open pavement for people to try to come off of church or go onto church right at that intersection. So, if I went down to, down to the other end of that block, that's Morganton Street, and I measured over on our side of Morgan, of Dixie, and that is 23 and a half feet wide curb-to-curb, and generally, people can only park on one side of Dixie along that area, and that leaves 16 feet of open space for cars to try to pass each other. So, go on down the street from there, from that intersection, down in the middle of the block, we have small children playing in the street, riding bicycles, running back and forth, out from between parked cars, animals, dogs and cats, running back and forth across the road. And the road itself is in really bad shape, somebody already mentioned that tonight, we have a lot of potholes, and like this councilwoman said, it's pretty much held together by tar that have been filled in the cracks. So, just based on traffic, if we add another 75 to 100 cars after this 48-unit apartment house goes up, we can't even handle the traffic safely that's on the street now, we sure don't need any more. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Rose Muller, I live at 610 Dixie Avenue, I've been there for 15 years. I have some questions about how this project ever came to the planning board, was that from WhipCog? Do we have WhipCog people here tonight, do we? Do we have WhipCog people here tonight, do we? Is there, no? Okay. I want to ask the planning board, I think they're still here.
Ma'am, you need to address the council.
Okay. Well, I have these questions for the planning board because the planning board advises you. I wonder, as Tracy asked, has that planning board ever gone to see that site? Have they ever walked down in there? Have they ever seen what it's like, the water levels? Right now, floodplain areas are not what they were. Something that was a five-hundred-year floodplain is probably now a fifty-year floodplain. If you looked at that plan, the water goes almost up to those buildings. They're not building on them. But how could you build large buildings in a floodplain? I've never heard of this before. This is beyond me. Maybe the chicken people would like to come there and give us chickens. We'd probably prefer that better. Now, let me see. I do want to know if the town council has ever gone to see the site. Does anybody who makes these huge decisions for the people of Valdez ever look at what is coming down the pike? We're not NIMBYs. We love our town. And it's time to be serious about dealing with the people who pay the taxes, who paid your bills, who pay your salaries. It's time to start listening to the people inside this town, because that's where your base of money comes from. And I think it's really time to start hearing, listening. The people of Valdez chose market value housing. There was a study here. We just read that. We spent money sending out things for people to answer. Oh, what would you like? Do you want low income housing? Do you want market value? Yes, we want market value. So our police and our firemen can go somewhere and rent. Why not pay attention to what's going on here? And especially the planning board, and I will address the council. And if they can hear me, I want them to, and maybe you can speak to them. Planning board, I don't think they know what they're doing. I don't think the questions that even I, just as a regular citizen, ask, they even know the answers to them. So I am really saying that I don't think you could table this. I don't think you could put this off to give these people another chance. I think you have the power tonight to deal with what your citizens want, what your taxpayers want. That's what I think it's time for this council to do. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name's Rick McClure. I live at four oh eight Guru Avenue. I'm taking a different approach. These people have done a great job. I can't add anything but they've already done. My approach is going against the COG. We have a COG person in Dalby has done this. I've done some studying on the COG when I heard about this. Looked it up. It started with the federal government, and then it went to the states. North Carolina state's got, I think maybe close to a hundred and twenty, something, maybe it might be less than that. Each one has a different amount of towns and counties that they have under. But I told my wife, it appears to be, there's an old saying, you can have a camel outside. Once in a while, it sticks its nose in the tent. Fine. But before long, the camel is in the tent with you, and then the next thing is kicking you out of the tent. I think we've allowed the COG to have too much control of our towns and communities. And looking at all the search on the internet, I advise you people to look it up. They're also part of the HUD. And I don't know if they get money off of these buildings they built for low-income housing and stuff. I'm not sure. I couldn't find that on the books. But I think we need to take a look at that. I think we need to hire our own person to do the planning, and if we need some help, we call. This goes against the thing that we did last year when they came in and took notes and the town said, we need to do this, we need to do that. Nothing was mentioned about any more of these kind of houses. We've got our share. We've done a good job at it. So I think we need to take a look, because this has nothing to do with the plans that were done a year ago. Take a look at the COG. Y'all look it up on the internet and see what they do. They do grants. We have them to write grants for us. When I was on the Vedic group, I think it was maybe a person from the COG that helped us get grants when we were doing the Vedic. They probably still do. But sometimes I think we need to be in-house instead of hiring an outhouse to do some stuff. So the people have talked tonight. I think you pretty much got an idea where this stands. But I press on you to look up the COG and what they do, what groups they help. But they're heavily into the HUD. That's going to be a HUD thing over there. So I'm not sure. I couldn't find if we get any, if they get any monies off what they suggest things are doing. But that's my approach. I didn't want to add anything. Anybody else that said, I think they did a great job. Thanks.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. I'm Mark Morgan with MC Morgan and Associates.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I think that our counsel advised that the developers should not be involved in this hearing.
He can speak.
He can speak, yeah.
He can speak as public hearing.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm MC Morgan and Associates, the owner of the development company that put this petition together. I'm also the developer of Tron's Place here in town and a few other within the region. I don't have a lot to add. I think tonight we heard some, a lot of good information. But, and we also heard Leslie put together a great outline of exactly what we're looking for and what we're needing. I will answer to one of the questions is that I do have the contract for the particular properties. So I do have that. The, I do want to thank for just a minute and talk about a really special thanks to local and regional legislators here locally and to kind of give me a pep talk and kind of maintain and keep me moving and keeping the process moving for Tron's Place. It's been a pretty rough two years and three years to put that development together. And they were very, very supportive. I also have a little side note. I do have three or four seniors here in town who send me not only a letter initially when it went out to the, went out for, to the media, but also I get Christmas cards, multiple of them, and just waiting for us to develop and open the project up. And that's going to be in early of 2026. You know, the general overview, we did a really good job with that, explaining what we're looking for. I think the only a couple of things I wanted to add was the building and the building design. It's, the property itself is pretty, it's difficult. It's a difficult site to work with. We have some challenges there as it relates to the topo on the site. And we also have some issues with the Class Five storm, or excuse me, Water District, sorry. So those are some of the things that I'm here to kind of answer and ask any, or answer any questions as it relates to what was not covered. But I think it's all covered on this particular one. The main concern that I want to make sure that we understand is that we're asking for a rezoning of a portion of a site that's already zoned. So we've got some of this property that's already zoned R eight. And all we want to do is just continue that all the way through the fifteen acres. That's what we're asking for. The buffers itself, it's fifteen acres. We're building two buildings on this particular site on almost sixteen acres of property. The buffers will meet and exceed any and everything that we have in the UDO at this particular point. So, and as far as the key features that we have, you know, we've talked about Dixie Avenue. There's multiple locations to access that site. And there is some road challenges, but this is things that we'll work out with the city as it relates to the entrance. Those are city roads. So we're going to have those conversations at the appropriate time. The low environmental footprint and the acreage and the watershed issues that we have and the restrictions, we're going to meet those. And the need itself that we have in this community and across this region as it relates to diversification of housing. I'm here today because there's a need, period. This particular types of development is just a cog in the wheel. All you're doing is allowing housing to just move. And that is moving from here to single-family, to duplexes, and for people to come in and live. And that's what we're wanting to do with what we have today. I would request the support of a positive vote for the rezoning here today. But I also would like to respectfully ask for, reserve a little bit of time to clarify any, but anything that comes up tonight. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Ms. Cole?
I am G. Marie Cole, and I live at seven oh five Bertha Street. And I wanted to say, because we are neighborhood bordering the last bit of apartment housing that went into Valdez. So I understand their concerns. We moved in there thirty-one years ago. It was a quiet neighborhood, lots of islands, lovely trees, and all the crows flying all over there nesting in those trees and the squirrels. Couple of years ago, that apartment complex started being built. It was constant noise the whole time it was being built. Trees came down. I'm glad I don't live on the other side of Pineburg, because it's right up thirty feet from somebody's backyard. So I sympathize with them too. But even that quiet barrier crossed my fingers. The people that own that vacant property never sell that off, because when all those trees come down, then we are just one big mass of noise and traffic. And that noise continues, because there's no way that you can't hear all that noise when all those cars run around. By the way, there are no crows living on Crow Hill anymore, because they're all hanging out at the old Alba Building over on Praley. And they hang out in the thing. A few of them came back one day, but they didn't stay. So even the birds, a lot of the wild animals came down. They squeezed into that woods. We still see the deer. We still see a couple of foxes in there and lots of rabbits and lots of squirrels. But I understand that you really have to be looking at the wider neighborhood that they're talking about when they're saying that they're afraid of it. Because I can see what would happen, what was a quiet neighborhood, a very quiet little street, is no longer that way. So just a thought.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, scene then. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Gerald Cessesi. I live at eight hundred Tron Avenue. I mean, everybody else pretty much covered it. I just wanted to be another person to come up. And, I mean, the traffic, since some of the stuff has been taken care of on Tron Avenue, it's cut way down. It's been really nice. It was really bad at one point. Still kind of bad. Had some guy walk through my yard the other day. Didn't really like it. But, I mean, the ones that have been over on Pineburg, my grandmother lives right across from it. People walking through her yard constantly, through her yard to the apartment complex. I mean, I don't particularly want that traffic. And if the roads there, I mean, they'd have to be widened, because when I'm driving through the neighborhood and there's cars coming, I mean, I stop on the side, let other cars come through. If there's that much more traffic through the neighborhood, it's going to be pretty, pretty tough. I just want to be another person. Everybody else did a good job.
What was your last name?
Cessesi. C-A-S-S-E-S-S-E.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, that's a tough one. But everybody else did a good job, so.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, scene then. I declare the public hearing closed. And counsel, I'll lead a motion and go through the voting process as to how you want to address this.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we deny the rezoning recommendation as inconsistent with the Vision Plan Future Land Use Map adopted in 2014.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Further discussion?
As a mover, I'll speak. I think it's been clear, we not only heard from a lot of citizens and neighbors, we also received a petition with some forty names of people who were opposed to having more low-income housing in Valdez. We've heard no, we saw, we saw no evidence that the planning board even considered any demographic and population data on the proportion of low-income housing units in this town, number of citizens. We asked questions at the preliminary meeting about the tax revenue. We know that Pine Crossing does not pay any tax revenue. There's whatever number of units are there. We don't know about this one. And I want citizens to understand, the council had no opportunity to weigh in on Tron Place. The council could weigh in on Pine Crossing, because the council, this council, a few years back, sold town property for the purpose of putting that low-income housing over there that our police and firemen and schoolteachers cannot get into. And the only, the only lever that this council has, the only control this council has, as I mentioned at the beginning, and I was, I had to stretch to bring it out, was that, is that the rezoning. If we rezone this parcel to R eight, then we have, it's gone. It's out of the council's hands. It's up to the planning board to approve whatever kind of special use they want. And we know, we know, if there was ever any doubt, we know where the planning board stands on this application, because the reason that they brought the whole thing forward was to have more low-income housing in Valdez, even though as far as we know, they don't have a clue of how many units we have, what percent of our acreage is devoted to low-income housing, what percent of our population, what percent of our housing units. Staff didn't know that at the last, at the preliminary meeting. I don't, I never see, well, we hadn't seen him in it, so we don't know what, we don't know what went on. But at any rate, that's what I'm saying. I am strongly in favor of denying this rezoning application. I'm almost glad that the developer has a contract. We'll take his word for it, so now we can act on it. We don't, we have no reason to table it.
Anyone else?
I just want to see us go after more industry. And if we have these areas, I'm looking at the map right now for land use or what the future land use should be. And when you see there's very little purple compared to our residential. And the purple is our industrial areas. I want to see us go as hard after the industries as we are the housing. We've got to. It's the only way that we can take some of the burden off of our citizens again, where industry used to pay a good deal of our industry used to pay a good deal of our utility as far as water goes and as far as our electricity, not our electricity, our taxes went. I just want to see us go that hard after that. So, I want to encourage, I know we're in the process of looking for a manager and other things and plan, we've got so many things in the fire right now, but as soon as we get everything in line, I think we all need to back whoever steps into those positions and say, hey, let's get some industry back in Valdez and make, make Valdez proud of ourselves again in manufacturing or whatever comes our way, say.
Anyone else? Okay, council, those in favor of denying the rezoning motion signify by saying yes and raising your right hand?
Yes.
Seen none, opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item B, approval of contact proposals. Approval of contract proposals for engineering services for Berrytown Waterline Project. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Paul Teague from Western Piedmont Council of Governments. The, last month, I guess in February, we sent out a request for qualifications for engineering services for the Berrytown CDBG infrastructure and the CDBG neighborhood revitalization. McGill and Associates was selected as the company to be able to present a contract. They have presented that contract to us and to the town. The amount is for $423,500. This is for engineering services, bidding and award phase, and construction, observation, and administration. All costs related to this contract are paid for by the CDBG grants. I believe Town Attorney Swanson did have a couple of clarifying points that he communicated with McGill Associates, but it does not materially affect the amounts of this particular contract. And what we would ask is for council approval pending approval by the Town Attorney and McGill Associates.
Okay, council questions?
I'm not sure. What do you need approval from us for exactly? I don't know that I understand.
To approve the contract amount for $423,500.
Anyone else? Okay, council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract proposals for engineering services for Berrytown projects, subject to the attorney's edits, and designate the mayor to execute said contract.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying yes and raising your right hand?
Yes.
Seen none, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. I think that's a very good project, and I appreciate your work, Paul. Okay, item C, approval of budget amendment, water plant filter inspection and rehab. RJ, or who's doing it? Bo?
Yeah, I'm just introducing him in here. But we talked about this last week, but this is the project, the water plant for six filters. RJ's going to go through some pictures, explain what's going on. But keep in mind, the budget amendment is for up to $115,000 because this is, we're opening some of this filter media up, so it's more of an exploratory work preliminary for the bigger scope of the water plant project. So, at this time, I'll turn it over to RJ, and he can give a little more technical details for us.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Appreciate the chance to speak to you this evening about this project. As we're all aware, and maybe to tie this discussion into a later item on the agenda, maybe shave a few minutes here this evening. As we all know, the town has a $7 million project that was awarded through an estate appropriation to make improvements at the water treatment plant, and that project is largely tied to the interconnection with the city of Lenore, whereby the town will eventually be able to produce and sell up to 4 million gallons a day of water to the city of Lenore as a redundant resilient water source for the city of Lenore. That interconnection also will give the town the ability to receive water from Lenore in the event of emergency or any other event that requires a significant amount of water to come back to Valdez. So, with that project, one of the key things that we got to establish through our process in this preliminary design phase is solid drawings on the way that those filters have been constructed. And so, one of the things to keep in mind is that that plant was originally built in the 1950s and then was expanded a series of times over the years. I think when we look through the old records that the town has on hand, we can find at least four projects that included upgrades to the, to the plant overall. And those would have been in the 50s, one in the 70s, one in the 80s, and then the last one, significant upgrade, was in the 90s. So, it's somewhere in that timeframe around the 90s that we understand that the filters were last modified, and what we found is, in looking at everything that we can see, it's kind of a hodgepodge at this point with the different equipment, different manufacturers. We've got at least two different types of filters with different underdrain construction types, and so those things can become very difficult to give bidding contractors an accurate representation of what's there now. And the better the picture we can give them, the more likely you are to get good bids and competitive bids that don't result in risk for change orders after construction is underway. Not to say that that risk goes to zero, but everything that we're doing with this investigative expenditure here this evening is to hire a contractor to come in, open up each one of those filters in one way or another, to be able to show us more information about what kind of underdrain systems are in each one of those filters, to tell us a little bit more about how the plinums, which are the bottom side of those, and I got a picture I can show you here in just a second, but show us how the plinums look, if they're in good shape or not, if they're going to need to be addressed or not, and then also to help us understand better what are the actual depths of media in the, in the filters now, so that when we go to embark on the big project late this year or next year, then we'll have a much more strong understanding of what we're working with, and contractors will as well. So, if we scroll through to the first diagram, you hear me talking about these filters. This is a diagram that's representative, this would be more of like a conventional surface treatment plant with a wheeler-style bottom. I used a diagram similar to this a year or so ago when we were talking about the overall project scope. But what you can see here is the direction of those arrows is showing how the water flows from on top of the filters, from about where that blue dashed line is all the way across, that would be representative of the water level in those filters. It flows down through an anthracite layer, a sand layer, a gravel layer, and then through those little triangle-shaped, they're actually pyramidal shapes, flowing through that structure all the way into the plenum there underneath. And that filtered water then has been clarified to the point where it's ready for disinfection, and that disinfection process is the last part of the treatment process before water gets stored and then eventually conveyed to customers through the distribution system. So, the work that we're talking about doing here is actually going to include a contractor coming in and building a box structure to be able to get access to those filters from the top down, because without that, there's no way to verify what many of those plinums or what those underdrains look like, and to know if they're in good shape or if they're in poor shape. And so, this is an example photo of a underdrain, I'm sorry, a drain filter basin. So, you see the white and black mix there on top. That's an example of a filter that has reduced concentration of anthracite. Even though it's black sand, that anthracite is an important part of the process, and you should see more of that anthracite on the surface than you see that white, that white sand. And so, that's a process where that water's flowing down through that filter media. And then, this is an example of how that boxout structure looks. You can't see it exactly in this photo, but around the edges of this wooden box that they've constructed, you've got the filter media all around that box, and then that allows the crews to dig down to the underdrain system that you can see there in the bottom, those black plastic liners that you see down there are hopper liners in those pyramidal hoppers. And then they have some porcelain balls in the bottom that are meant to create a structure to support the overall filter media. And then this is an example of a filter backwash cycle. So, one of the other things that this budget amendment will support is the more immediate addressing, servicing of some of the surface sweeps in the, in the filters at the water plant. So, that water looks awfully muddy, of course, nobody would want to drink that, and that's, that's good because that's the backwash. So, that's the process whereby you've run water through the filter from top down for a certain number of hours. A good running filter is going to be about 96 hours of runtime, and then when you hit that maximum runtime, when the, when the filter starts to show signs of mud balls or accumulation of other silt and sediment, then you shut that filter off from producing water to the drinking water system, and then you initiate a backwash cycle. And so, there are pumps at the water plant that then move a lot of water, like over 5,000 gallons per minute, back through this filter in the reverse direction. And what you see then is this filter fills up, and it then lifts that sediment out of the sand and anthracite layers, and it all spills over into those troughs that you can see there. And so, that backwash cycle runs for a certain period of time, whatever it takes, until the operators see that that backwash gets clarified. And once it's back to a clarified state, then the backwash cycle can end, and the filter revert back to its normal filter and production cycle. So, again, all of this that we're talking about tonight is to either give us information, better information on the plans and how to develop those plans, or it is to repair some of the surface sweep systems that need to be addressed now rather than waiting on the big project. So, I know that's a lot of information, and council's already heard a great deal of info tonight on other matters, but I'd be happy to discuss any questions that you may have at this point about this request.
Counsel, questions?
Let me ask a couple. This proposal is to do a study, this is engineered, this doesn't solve the problem, this just defines it so we can get estimates on what it will take to fix it.
Correct. This will have a third-party contractor come in to the water plant and perform these evaluations, if you will. They'll provide a report to us as the designer for the project, and then that will aid us in development of our plans and specifications for the project.
I know you have, I know you have this answer, but why couldn't we have worked this into the $7 million that we have for the upgrade?
So, the, the information that's available to look at in the plans for this plant is just inconclusive. It's, like I said, dating back to the 50s and then a series of drawings through time. And then when you look at the equipment that's installed in the filters now, it's obvious that some other maintenance projects happened somewhere in the life of the plant that brought in more of a mixed bag of equipment. So, our confidence levels in being able to tell your bidders on the big $7 million project that we know exactly what you've got to deal with is relatively low. So, this is a step to help make sure that we establish better confidence in what those underdrains look like today.
Okay, so the, when, when we define what needs to be done, that cost will be covered in that $7 million project?
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yes. And I'll say too, nothing here that we're talking about spending now will be rendered obsolete in the $7 million project. We are going to intentionally try to continue to work our way through with the filter media that you have, even though that will result in reduced runtimes. But we're going to try to, we're going to try our best to not replace media now, just because we know that would be one disposable item when the $7 million project comes.
And was this $115,000 in the 10-year capital expenditure plan?
It would not have been, no, sir.
It came up since?
Yeah, just since we've started all of that record review and verification.
RJ, you did say that though this project would reduce the risk for change orders, which then would perhaps bump up big money when the project actually began.
Yeah, change orders are unfortunate in that you never have a chance to get true competition like you do on bid day. So, the more detailed that we can be with drawings up front, the better the bids are going to be, the more consistent they should be, and hopefully the better insulation you've got against change orders that could easily eclipse $115,000 if, if things are not the way that you show them on the plans.
Anyone else? Okay, council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget amendment for the water plant filter inspection and rehab.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying yes and raising your right hand?
Yes.
Seen none, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, RJ. Okay, item D, approval of capital project ordinance amendment, pool structure, Mr. White.
All right, so, this is in response to the meeting last month, the pool dome structure. Council approved that contract with Eden Domes, or Eden Air Structures are called. And so, what this is doing is just putting the funds into the project itself so that we can begin that, that project. The total budget amendment is for 767,308. What that comprises of is the contract with Eden, labor for the put-up, the ADA work that is contracted with Halc, and then the site work, which includes demo, new concrete, and the anchoring system that is going through Moss Marlowe. We do have some funds in here for a storage building so that we can store the dome structure on site rather than transporting it, which will help extend the life of it, and then a small contingency amount. So, that's what makes up all of that, those funds for this amendment.
Questions, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I was going to say, I do feel like it's, it's time that we get back to indoor swimming in Valdez, so I do plan to vote for this tonight. However, over the long run, 20, 25 years, I still do not think this is the best deal for Valdez. I do still think that the structure would have been better off. I think over the long run, we would have saved more money, especially when I see that we're going to have to pay $55,000 to $57,000 per year for the, bringing, taking the bubble up and taking it down. I know that price will go up over a 20- or 25-year period. There's only a two-year warranty for parts. I still believe it will cost us a lot of money over the years. It is the cheapest price right now on April 7, 2025. I will support it at this point because we've got to get indoor swimming back for our citizens.
Okay, anyone else?
Bo, I'd like to know, as far as putting that thing up and taking it down, is that negotiable, you think, with Eden Company? Is that something we could negotiate from $50,000 to $25,000 a year? I think that's something that we need to really look at and talk with them about.
I have done that.
You have?
Yeah.
Okay, great, great.
They've got their costs built in. You know, back when the town was doing it ourselves?
Yes.
It was still costing us around $13,000 to $15,000. It, it was still costing us around thirteen to fifteen thousand dollars each time. So, their, their costs aren't too far off from, and they're taking the risk of the, the employee, their labor risk, but they're also taking on the risk of damage to the bubble.
Right.
So, you know, when you've got experienced people putting the bubble up, I think that's going to help extend the life of it as well.
Okay, yeah. And, and also, I'd like to say, if this thing lasts us twenty-five years, we've got twenty-five years to save for another bubble, another permanent structure, which has not been done. And I would like to see us commit to saving money so much per year to make sure that we don't get into the same situation that this council has been in this year. Whatever the council wants to decide to do with budgeting or whatever, I think if we save a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars a year, in twenty-five years, you're going to have enough money to put another bubble or a permanent structure.
Anyone else? Okay, council, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the capital project ordinance amendment for the pool structure.
Okay, I make a motion to approve?
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes and raising your right hand?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Counsel, item E, approval of resolution authorizing upset bid process for sale of town-owned property located at three forty-one Roderick Street in North.
Alright, so, got an offer here of seven thousand five hundred dollars for this parcel. And just bring up a GIS photo where it's at, so, it's just straight up Roderick, you go past Main Street, and it's one of the lots at the farther end of the, the road there. We've got an offer letter in hand, and we've got a five percent deposit on hand as well. So, this is the first step in the process. If council decides to approve this resolution, it opens up the upset bid process for ten days. It'll be advertised for that time period. If no upset bids are received, then the town can consider the sale. If an upset bid is received, then that resets the clock of the ten-day window. So, potentially, we could have this on the agenda for next month as a resolution to sell, unless we get upset bids where it continues that process.
Okay, questions, counsel?
So, this is not locking in a sale on it, it's just the upset bid process.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the upset bid process for the property located at three forty-one Roderick Street North.
I make a motion, we approve.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further questions? All those in favor signify by saying yes and raising your right hand?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item F, approval of resolution authorizing the upset bid process for the sale of town-owned property located at eight hundred Pineboro Avenue Southeast. Sir.
Alright, so, let me get on my, so this is the property that the town purchased several years ago for a potential public safety site. The acreage is just under fifteen acres. It does include a Duke power easement on there, so the usable acreage is not the full fifteen acres. The town has been offered one hundred thirty-four thousand four hundred ninety dollars, which is the tax value. We do have a deposit, five percent on hand. And, the one thing about this is, the sale will be contingent on a special use permit for the property, so.
Explain that, Bo, that, that's probably a question I was going to ask to you or to Mr. Swanson.
Okay, so.
I, I don't want to get into the same thing that we got into here with low-income housing on Pineboro.
Sure, I, I, I agree with you. From what, what I've been told is this would be market rate, either townhomes or condos that would be planned to be developed. The special use permit would, it's zoned correctly for that already, but in order to put those on this property, it would require a special use permit for that. So, it wouldn't need rezoned, but it would, the zoning already allows it under the UDO, but it would just need to be a special use permit for that.
I, I'm not sure that I understand exactly what that means. If we sell this property to this company individual, how can we make sure that no low-income housing goes over there and they're going to do what they're say they're going to do as far as putting townhomes or individual houses up? How, how can we make sure that that happens there?
Well, their, their special use permit would specify that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think the other half of that answer is, it would be the planning board, the Board of Adjustments that would decide, they, they're the ones that have the final word on the special use permit. But if they didn't hear, if they didn't get the word from citizens of Valdez tonight about special use for low-income housing, or.
Yeah. Yeah, so, let, let me interject. You, you guys only have so much control over the type of housing that is actually put on a property. Zoning controls the nature of the housing that's put on the property, whether it's a single family, whether it's industrial, it's not what kind of industrial, or kind of housing. So, I think what is being proposed here is, the person who has extended the offer is saying, I want to buy this, but before I actually close on it, there's going to have to be a special use permit authorizing me to essentially use it in a certain way under the zoning ordinance. And if that is not approved for whatever reason, then I'm not required to buy the property. So, that, that is essentially what is being offered.
Yeah, and that's between him and the, and the, well, that's between.
Right, all, all you can do is agree to, to authorize the upset bid process, and then if it does get approved, the special use gets approved, it comes back to you, you'll finalize the contract.
And if there's an upset bid, it doesn't necessarily require special use, right?
Yeah, that's exactly right. The bid could contain a different term that wouldn't be contingent upon a special use permit.
If we get upset bid, they could just want to leave the property vacant, we don't, we don't know.
Yeah.
So, so what I'm hearing you say, Attorney Swanson, is that we can't control whether low-income housing will go there or not?
Not, not by zoning, no. When you talk about zoning, you're talking about what type of properties are generally permitted to be constructed in a particular area. Are they industrial, are they residential? If they are residential, what kind of residential, mixed-use, single-family? So, that's what your, your zoning ordinance essentially does, is it says, if you're an M1, here's what can go there as a matter of right. Or, not as a matter of right, here's what can go there under a special use. You have to get special privilege or permission to construct certain things in certain zones. So, that's kind of a zoning issue, but you can't necessarily just say, on that property, I don't want this income level of housing to be located there.
If not, then I'll entertain, entertain a motion for the approval of resolution authorizing the upset bid process for sale of town-owned property at eight hundred Pineboro Avenue Southeast.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Further questions?
One more question. The, I think the council agreed, I don't recall if it was a resolution, that the, that sometime, sometime last year, that when the town sells property, the revenue from that sale will go into the public safety building account. So, is that, is that happening with this Roderick Avenue and, and this one as well?
That's correct, that's what I'm doing.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Those in favor signify by saying yes and raising your right hand?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item G, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five year-to-date financial results, Mr. White.
Okay, so, this will be through the month of February, which is sixty-seven percent of the budget year. We are, our revenues are running a little higher than that, which is good, what we want to see. And our abhorrent tax revenue in particular, we're at ninety-seven point nine four percent collection, we've got forty-six thousand still outstanding, so that's a really good collection rate at this point in the year. Our sales tax revenue, which is our second biggest source of general fund revenue, is actually right on track at sixty-eight point two percent, so that's, that's good, that's what we want to see, either trending or right at that. And then same for the utility fund, our revenues are trending a little higher than where our, actually, we're, we're right about where we're need to be, and they're trending higher than our expenditures at this point. But that, those expenditures will increase because we've got some capital items hitting here in the next month or two that are part of the budget process, but we're still working through those to get those contracts going. In your packet tonight, also with the financial statements is two statements of our investment funds that you'll see. The Capital Management Trust and NC Class are two investment tools that we have, that we kind of diversify our funds that are sitting idle to maximize our investments. So, that's really all I've got to talk about tonight, unless there's any questions.
Questions, counsel?
We have so far received, that I come up with, three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars of revenue above what was budgeted for those lines. And then, I think you've reported in the past that our salary expense is going to be, we're going to, we're going to have a positive result there because we haven't had a town manager for whom we've, how, how much is, how much are we saving on the town manager salary roughly?
I haven't done the calculation lately. I think at the end of December, we're at forty-some thousand dollar savings, so, you know, we're three more months, so, we're probably around sixty-five, something like that.
Okay, and it's just getting us up around four hundred thousand. Now, you're, and you're also, are you still waiting for FEMA to reimburse us for the claims that we made?
We've gotten a few of those claims in, the projects have been completed, we've got some other projects that are still gone going, waiting on parts to come in. Those are our water plant projects, but yeah, they'll.
So, that seems to be moving forward, and I think you told us last month that, that would have like, a hundred thousand dollars would go to the general fund approximately.
Yeah, but remember that we've already spent those funds, so it's just replenishing what we spent, it wouldn't be additional revenues.
And what was that again?
It, it wouldn't be new revenues, it, it would just be replenishing what we spent out of the general fund, so, we've already did a budget amendment a couple months ago to, to spend, to spend those funds. So, we're just replenishing, there wouldn't be any new revenues on top of what, like the extra investment income and stuff we have.
So, we've already spent it?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we didn't, but it's not in the budget as an expense?
It, not originally, but when we did the budget amendment, it became in the budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
But anyway, it looks like we might be three or four hundred thousand dollars ahead of the budget in revenue.
Right, right. And, and the big part of that, as you'll see, is the investment income is doing well. I put the rates on there, but we're around four and a half percent. We've got a lot of idle money right there, so we're bringing in, you know, as much as we can while it's sitting idle, and that's helping. Hopefully those rates stay where they're at, I don't, with, you know, with the economy right now, I'm not sure, but it's always an unpredictable thing.
One more question. What, what would happen if by stroke of good fortune, we ended up getting that five hundred thousand dollar pool structure grant approved for this inflatable dome? How, how would that impact our budget and our, and the action we've taken tonight on that?
So, the budget amendment tonight was pulling that money out of the fund balance to put in that project fund. So, if we were to get an amendment to be awarded the five hundred thousand dollar grant, we wouldn't be pulling this full seven hundred and sixty, or seven hundred, whatever how much it was, we'd only be pulling the difference of that. So, it would save our fund balance five hundred thousand dollars.
And then there's also a hundred thousand dollars that was donated to match that, but we don't know the status of that, do we? That hundred thousand?
Correct, that was a, it was a private donor, and I'm not sure what the status of that is right now, but we haven't addressed that yet.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on to item H, status from going approved projects, public safety building.
Our public safety facility RFQ process, so, we had the panel do an evaluation, we put that in a scoring matrix, we've picked the top three firms in that scoring matrix, and then the panel did interviews on March twenty-seventh. So, we kind of talked about this last week. The plan was to, from those interviews, have the panel make a recommendation, work through a contract with that recommended firm, and then bring that to council as the recommendation with the contract at the May meeting. If we need to take a step back, we can get council more involved with the evaluation process. We can schedule some interviews with these contractors so that y'all can also do your own evaluation, if that's the route of what we talked about last week.
I think we talked about the contractors making a presentation to council.
Correct, that would, that's what that would be. So, the, the same presentation they gave to the review panel, they would give to council. And that would just need to be scheduling coordination with all that, but.
Questions?
So, the.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
And you got in your packet the, the scoring evaluation sheet, so those three firms were Wharton Smith, DR Reynolds, and Moss Marlowe.
And if I, if I read that correctly, that's, they scored the highest, is that correct?
Correct, they scored the, the highest on that scoring matrix, so.
Okay.
Those were the ones that were selected for the interview.
Okay, and that's who will be receiving information from those three companies?
Yeah, if, if council selects to, to go that route, to interview them, then yes, that would be the three, yeah.
Anyone else? Counsel, do you want, Mr. White, go ahead and schedule those presentations from the three contractors?
Okay, well, we'll have to coordinate everybody's schedule and.
Right, yeah.
And I'll work with contractors, see what their schedules are too, because they have four or five people on their team that'll come, so they have to coordinate all their schedules, so, we'll work it out and we'll make it happen.
Will they do that on regular council meeting night, or?
No.
It would, it would be during the day.
The special meeting, special call meeting.
So, how the, how it's structured, they'll have one, one hour total, their presentation is thirty minutes, and then y'all get thirty minutes for Q and A with them.
Yeah, I, I would like to, for that to happen.
Sure.
Okay, anything else on the public safety building? Water plant upgrade?
I think RJ covered that pretty well earlier.
Yeah, I think so.
Yep.
Town manager search, we will discuss that in our closed meeting here in just a few minutes. Lap funding discussion, Mr. Harvey. No, I'm sorry, I apologize, Daniel Odom, is he here tonight? There he is.
Daniel's somewhere. Yep, so, this is going to be the lap funding, and I'm going to bring this up for Daniel, he'll, he's going to kind of talk about potential projects. And I've got your, oh, there you are, I got your map up for you.
Great. So, just to provide some context before we get into this, at this moment, the Western Piedmont Council of Governments has four point six million dollars of what is called STBG funding available in this call for projects. What we don't have is a funding program that we're going to talk about shortly called TAPDA, or Transportation Alternatives Program. And that's going to come into play with the projects that Bo and I looked at earlier last week. We took a look at a project on Mecel Avenue for a sidewalk connection, and we took a look at a project on Laurel Street for a sidewalk connection. Both of them are good projects, they make good connections, they would score well. The problem is that they do not meet the minimum requirements for STBG funding, which are that it is, one, identified on the federal aid eligibility map, which is what we have here, and second, that it meets federal functional classification requirements, which is a collector or above. These are defined, Mecel Avenue and Laurel Street below US seventy are defined as local roads, they fall below collectors, they are not eligible for STBG. Mecel Avenue and Laurel Street below US seventy are defined as local roads, they fall below collectors, they are not eligible for STBG. What they could be eligible for is TAP DA, which the NPO does not have funding for. And that adds a variable to the selection process, which is why I'm here to talk to you. Essentially, there is still an avenue for that project to be funded through what's called a funding swap. Hypothetically, if you all submitted those as applications to the LAP program, they scored highly enough, uh, to fall into our funding range, we would then have to go to NC DOT and work out a funding swap where we would trade them the project's value in STBG DA for TAP DA. What I cannot give you is any sort of, um, estimate on the likelihood of that funding swap being completed, because there's multiple variables that go into that. One is I touched on, is the project's score, if it's gonna be competitive, two being the project's cost, which we do not know at the moment, and three being NC DOT's capacity to complete that funding swap, which is, one, gonna rely on their willingness to complete the funding swap based off of the funding years, and second, uh, just the funding that they have available to complete the swap. So I can't give you an estimate on how likely it is that that swap will take place, but what I can give you is certainty that it is gonna put these applications at a disadvantage for this round of funding compared to applications that are eligible for STBG DA funding. Uh, so what is up for you all to decide is whether you want to proceed with these projects, or if you want to take a look at, uh, roads, project areas in Valdez that are eligible for STBG funding, uh, which are on this map, which include, uh, Prairie Street, uh, seventy, Carolina Street, Love Lady, Laurel Street, above seventy, um, so that's essentially, um, I think that covers what we wanted to talk about. Just up to you all, how you proceed in the, the call for projects.
Is Carolina Street eligible?
Yes, Carolina, Carolina Street would be eligible, uh, for STBG DA funding, we'd still have to look at, uh, the individual improvements that you all would apply for to make sure they would be eligible, especially giving, uh, given, um, you know, recent changes in federal direction for these programs, but generally it would be eligible.
So these, but just to clarify what you just told us on, these two, uh, streets, uh, the work would be done by DOT even though they're not state roads, uh, and would, would not be contracted directly by the town, is that right?
They would be contracted directly by the town, uh, through the LAP program, the municipality itself is the managing authority of all of the work, so the town would contract with the design firm, uh, would contract with, uh, a firm of recourse for roadway acquisition, and ultimately would manage all of the aspects of construction of the project.
Okay, would you run through again why these are not, not eligible for LAP?
So they're eligible for LAP, they're not eligible for STBG DA funding, which is the only funding that we have currently, and that is because they do not meet federal highways' minimum requirements for STBG funding specifically, based off of federal functional classification and federal aid eligibility.
And I believe from our conversations, sidewalk projects are scoring higher than in other projects, is that correct statement?
They're not scoring higher, but in the eyes of, um, the federal administration, they are more favorable.
Okay. So application deadline is May second? Right?
Correct.
Okay, so we just kind of need some direction on how we wanna proceed with it, do we wanna pursue a project, um, it, you know, it's, we got less than a month now to put some things together for that, so-
And the cool thing about this one, if it were an easy route, is that, uh, it connects virtually all sidewalks in Valdez with the rec center. There are two gaps presently between the other sidewalks and, and the rec center, but if, if these two parcels were done, you could walk on sidewalk from, uh, Prairie Street, Church Street, the end of Laurel Street, the way to the rec center on sidewalks. So it's, uh, it's a little disappointing that it, that there's a torturous route to get to, to the funding, but that's government, right?
And it'll probably have to be these two different sections, probably broken up into phases, phase one and phase two, based on the funding levels.
What's the downside of going ahead and submitting the applications? Takes some time?
I guess there is no downside, really, uh, other than, you know, staff time, having the COGS time.
So let's go for it.
Let me ask one question, um, I was for the sidewalk grant, and it was voted down, um, last meeting, and in voting it down, we sent a resolution that said it was cost prohibitive for us as a town overall to our town budget due to other competing projects. So if we didn't have the money last month to do the project with sidewalks, help me understand how we have the money now, 'cause I would love to do this, but help me understand how we have the money all of a sudden this month to do the project with sidewalks.
Uh, excuse me, if I'm, I'm, we're kind of putting- Jeez! I gotta, I'll change, I'll get a different mic, I'll stop with my hands. We're, we're kind of putting our interim manager on the spot here, I think, the council did not vote last month to turn down that sidewalk. Uh, the council had a sidewalk proposal, a Love Lady sidewalk proposal, in front of it at the January meeting, not a single council member took any action to proceed with that. All we did last month was, since we had decided not to do that project, was to return those funds to the, uh, administrator, to COG, who's administering the program, that's why they have four point six million dollars available this year and not three point five million. So that's all we did, was reduce, release the funds, uh, last month.
But we, we put, and it's in the minutes, a Town of Valdez Resolution withdrawing from the LAP grant, and we said the reason why we withdrew was it was cost prohibitive project overall to the town's budget due to other competing projects which rose in costs. So the reason we said we did this was because it was too much on our budget. That's what the minutes say from last month, I'm, I, this is straight from our minutes.
The resolution they passed.
So, well, that was the resolution we passed. I'm reading straight from that resolution.
If we were to apply for that, is there a chance that it could be less than the other project was? I know that we're getting ready to go through a budget process, so we would know a little more about how much each of the projects would be as far as the fire department, police department, we'd be, have a little bit maybe clearer picture maybe if we're heading, um, and it's not like we're saying we're gonna spend, it's just exploring the option, it sounds like it could be a hit or miss as far as whether it'll be approved or not, so it's just basically putting it out there saying, could we get funding for that?
Yes, application, so we don't, we don't even know if it would be accepted or awarded, um, uh, the amount of the project, I don't know that, what that is yet. Um, that's the next step, is if council wants to pursue this, part of the application process is to come up with a engineer's estimate of how much that project will cost. The capital projects for like public safety and stuff, we're, we're still working through that with, you know, with the RFQ process and stuff, so we don't know how much those are gonna be yet either.
Wouldn't there be costs for getting the engineering design and all of that work, would be, there would be a cost associated with that?
There, there is a small cost for that, yeah, for their time to do that, but it wouldn't be a, a separate project in itself.
I like a suit, you know, that's, we don't know, we don't know what the cost is for these, uh, but I, again, the, that other project was not picked up, I mean unanimously, zero person, zero council member wanted to do that Love Lady sidewalk, and the reason was it didn't go anywhere to serve citizens. What we're talking about here is two pieces of sidewalk that connect the rec center to the rest of the town through sidewalks. That, that's a huge difference between a sidewalk to nowhere and a sidewalk to our rec center, so that kids on the west side of town could walk from Church Street on sidewalk, pedestrian crossings, all up to the, the rec center, you know, that's, that's the possibility here, so let's find out what it'll cost.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion from council to direct staff to proceed with trying to obtain LAP funding, that work for you?
Yeah.
Counsel, I need a motion.
I'll soon, I'll move on.
Second?
Second, and if Councilman Harvey doesn't have a question, I do. As far as that goes, I mean, we're, we're looking at the LAP funding, but can we see how much it would be for the engineer and everything before we make the final decision? I don't wanna just say, I feel like this is like just saying, oh yeah, spend all the money without us, it's another thing of not knowing how much we're looking at engineer costing or anything else.
I agree, I agree totally with that.
The engineer-
See if we can get the money and then see how much it's gonna cost us, then we can decide whether or not we want to do it or not.
I think you have to have all that information to apply for a grant.
Is that how, so we apply for the grant and then?
And the, and the grant deadline is May second, which is before our next meeting, so, um-
See, it's either do it tonight or don't do it.
So how much would be spent to do the LAP application, is there any way to know, or?
I don't-
I don't have, I don't think there's a way to know.
Yeah, it would, it would just be a time, a time thing to, to put that, I mean, I don't think it takes them that long to put a cost estimate together for something like that.
Okay, but we could go ahead and pursue it and just-
Yeah, and it won't be a budget amendment for that portion of it, it'll cover it under our current adopted budget as it is, yeah, so-
Okay, that's what I need to hear, okay, thank you.
All right, no problem.
Yeah, last, last year, the resolution, the application was approved by the council, uh, at the June three meeting. So I assume we're pretty much same schedule this year?
Any further questions?
We just don't need to approve a grant and turn around and give the grant back, we need to be serious if this is what we wanna do.
And council will have an op, uh, opportunity once, if it is awarded, to accept the award first, 'cause we got past that point last time, we already accepted the award, so-
If we accept it, we need to take it, guys.
So, so once we know what the cost is, we're awarded the project, then we can go over the financials and say, is this, does this project make sense for how much it costs?
Okay, anything else, counsel? All those in favor of applying for the LAP funding signify by raising your right hand saying yes?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Okay, interim manager's report.
Okay, let me bring this down here. Okay, got a long report here.
Make it short.
Bluegrass at the Rock presents Lonesome River Ban on Saturday, April fifth, at seven thirty PM, Old Rock School. The Valdez Tigers, uh, baseball and T-ball opening day is at Fletcher Field on Saturday, April twelfth, so that's this coming Saturday, and it starts at eleven AM, the games go all day. Uh, budget review, number one, is scheduled for April fifteenth and sixteenth, starting at nine AM, uh, it says to five PM, we shouldn't have to go that long, hopefully, uh, but that's gonna be here in the council chambers. Town offices are closed on Friday, April eighteenth, for the Easter holiday. Old Colony Players presents Something Rotten at the, uh, Old Rock School, April eighteenth, through, through the twenty-seventh, on Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays at seven thirty, and then a, a Sunday matinee at two thirty. The Spring Craft Market is going to be April twenty-sixth, at nine AM to four PM on Temple Field. Our next agenda council meeting is Monday, April twenty-eighth, six PM, at the, the agenda review meeting, and then a regular council meeting is the following Monday, uh, May fifth at six PM. And then this last one, just a reminder for everyone, the Town of Valdez wastewater plant has compost available, free of charge, you can go pick it up, or you can, uh, hire in the penthouse or bring it to your home. Um, a lot of people are doing plantings this time of year, gardens, this is a very good compost to get some good produce, so remember, it's free, free for, um, everyone who wants it, so all you gotta do is notify us and we'll get you hooked up with that, okay?
Counsel, I encourage your attendance at our town, uh, events like the, uh, Little League Baseball and Fun Fishing and Spring Craft Show. I encourage you to support our town by being there. Mayor and council comments?
I have to comment that I was given far too much credit for people in Valdez to be able to swim indoors this winter. So I don't want all that credit, but I, I, I'm pleased to have all that recognition. I heard something I don't believe, I heard, I heard an indication that there was spitefulness about the fact that the council chose a different cover than a few people wanted, and that as a result, they may not contribute to the capital fund drive that the council approved. The council approved the capital fund drive, and we certainly expect the staff to go forward with that, and let's hope that the, whether it's sixty people or six thousand people, we've heard all kind of numbers, who swim in the wintertime, let's hope that most of them appreciate what the town has done by making this bubble type of, uh, cover, same type that everybody was happy with for twenty-two years, it will now be good for twenty-five years. And I guess one other little comment is, uh, it would be interesting to have a financial analyst look at the funds that we're saving and do a twenty-five year projection on how much, uh, annual income that would produce. What would that, whether it's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars or one point two million dollars, what would that be worth twenty-five years from now if it's invested, which it will be, because we didn't spend it on an aluminum frame structure that has panels that have a warranty of about ten years?
Anyone else? If not, then I will take this opportunity-
Mr. Mayor, can I?
I'm sorry.
Can I make a comment? I'm sorry.
I apologize.
Um, I've been thinking a, a lot about this the last few days, and I'm the first to acknowledge my baby steps in the municipal government. But I've been around watching this and observing this for the past sixteen months, and I'm really concerned with what, um, I've been hearing, and it, we've heard it voiced tonight about our participation with COG, that's a longstanding, uh, relationship. COG does a lot for our community, our county, surrounding counties with regard to housing and traffic, and we finally got them engaged in our job search, which is a good thing. Economic development, so I think to even consider that is not a wise choice, I mean, they've helped us with grant writing and just on and on with different, um, things they've done. While I think what this hiccup that we've experienced over the last two weeks with regard to the planning board, we were used to an employee with forty years, ever how long, many years, decades, Mr. Johnson had, and we brought, we have somebody, we had a planner from the COG, and I think she's done as well as she can for what she's, one day a week. I think disparaging the planning board is not appropriate, I think they are volunteers who signed up for a payless job, and it sounds like tonight, a thankless job, which they shouldn't be in that position for, and I hope that everyone will, um, step back and think about things that were said, and maybe they maybe could have been said a little, um, nicer, and we need to acknowledge their service and what they do, and I think they obviously gained some, some information and not going forward with what we're gonna do, you know, in terms of our development in town, but I just wanted to get that off my chest, thank you. I'm sorry, and I had two more things.
No, it's fine.
Um, and I wanted to thank you, I wanted to thank the, um, Chief Sharp this month, who, um, gave me a tour around town, as well as, um, Bo and Mr. Mosley and the folks down at the water plant and the waste treatment plants, who gave me tours there of our, um, operations, and we have a lot to be thankful for in this town, the least of which are our staff and the folks that, um, are doing our vital services.
Thank you, I couldn't agree more.
And can I say, I just thought about, she was thinking, I just wanna say, I am so proud of our whole council for taking time in the last month to do some financial training, um, so one of what we're looking at when we go into our budget, I just, I think that is phenomenal that you guys all participated in that, so hopefully it won't give Bo such a hard time next week, because we may know what we're doing a little bit. Probably will still have a lot of questions, but, and also thank you, Bo, for, um, always being a phone call away and helping us out, it's appreciated.
You better watch out, Bo, we've been to the school of government and had training.
Scary.
It is scary.
I'm aggravated. Anybody else? If not, Counsel, I will take this opportunity to announce that I will not be seeking reelection in November for the mayor's seat. And with that, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session, and this will be to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of employment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee according to General Statute one forty-three dash three one eight point eleven A six, and also according to General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen point eleven A three, to consult with an attorney retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the town attorney and the town council, which privilege is hereby acknowledged. And I'll entertain that motion now.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Thank you. The closed meeting will be in the community room. Okay, counsel, at this time, I need a motion to recess the meeting till April twenty-first at one PM at Western Piedmont Council of Governments in Longview for a closed session in pursuit of General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven A six to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee. I'll take a motion, please. Second?
Second.
Those in favor signify by saying yes and raising your right hand?
Yes.
So be it. So the twenty-first, we will meet at COG, at one o'clock or at twelve thirty, I think Anthony said.